I'd just call the meeting in order. I'd like to let you know we got an executive session for our two on meeting. It's about personnel and leadership. I do apologize for one pass or a lot of comments, but we'll call this.
Mrs. Cogburn, here. Mr. Baker. Mr. Lucassio.
Here.
Mrs. Maynes, here. Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Bartow.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
This is your report.
I have no report.
Next slide is your report, Mrs. Spider.
On the agenda for next week is a proposed resolution that is in support of Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526, and if you're a board member, you have it at your seat. Basically, it is a resolution that means that the Greater Luttrell School District supports these two bills that have been proposed about cyber charter school. And in summary, basically, it simply states that if a school district presently operates a cyber school within the school, students or parents who choose to go to a separate cyber school would have to pay for that separately from the school-supported program. So the resolution would be sent to the state noting that the Greater Luttrell School District supports this bill. So we would ask for that support for next week. Thank you.
Judy, could I add to that?
Please.
You know, just so you're aware, currently, we pay about $99,000 per year for a regular ed student and about $18,000 per year for a special education student. If this bill goes through, that annual tuition's going to go down significantly, probably to around $3,200 or so. Now, we realize a savings depending on how many regular ed and how many special ed can we actually work it out, of somewhere between a half million and a million dollars a year. So it is significant, and it has a significant impact on our school district and free up funds for other areas. So it would definitely be very impactful in the city.
It should have been waived. It was mandated from the very beginning.
So not only the resolution, but if you're speaking to many of your representatives or some of us feel credit to talk about this, please, particularly the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks. Educational plan, Mrs. May.
Okay. We'll begin with the student report, and off to 12:00 AM.
Hi. Hi. This month, Mount Lehigh died there having their PSSA testing. Mount Lehigh is celebrating Earth Day because of that. And also, sixth grade camp is coming up, and LES already had their camp presentation, so they're all excited for that. Transition activities are happening with sixth graders, and all the schools are having new kindergartners coming to visit for next year because we're almost graduating, and all the new kids are almost coming in.
So for the junior high, we have a choir concert on 8:15, 7:00 PM, you know, I told you. And I was reading this, and it made me think of, like, a video, like, a couple years ago. I think, I think you were in this room, and you were talking about academics, arts, and athletics. And I remember it was really the video we saw a million times in school. I don't know what it was. We saw the teams to go up here, and I just heard you emphasizing those perfectly important points that throw well around in student. And then for the senior, for the senior high, we have a chamber choir that will be performing for the PMBA in Pittsburgh on April 5th. So that means our chamber choir is going to be really well, not going to lie. They have a fantastic chamber choir. Remember, during Christmas, they come on every year, every weekend. And unfortunately, Chloe and I are going to have to head out right now. We have a rather large English project, and it seems to be a rather large meeting. And contrary to that, thank you for the reference, senior year is not over.
It's actually going to be harder as we go, and it should not be the case.
So thank you very much for giving me that.
Hold on one minute.
Yes.
I attended the National Order Society Adoptions the end of March, I think it was, and the National Order Society sponsors scholarships every year. They're very difficult to get, and I'd like to add one of their scholarships for nearly $200, along with, who was the other?
Apparently.
I just.
It's the same, huh?
It's very unusual for a school to win two of them. It's very unusual for a school to win period, so I think we should congratulate.
Thank you very much. Well, now I forgot that we went to.
Your report is attached to your review. We just finished today, the second day of screening for Luttrell Elementary School kindergartners, incoming kindergartners. So the screening process is done. Right now, we sit at 189 students enrolled in next year's kindergarten class. I would expect, based upon past years, that number will come up somewhere between 20 to 30 more students. So we'll come in somewhere right around 220, probably not to exceed 230, if you don't guess.
Good, thank you. Keep us updated.
You bet.
Okay. Educational programs, go for it.
Yes, thank you. Before we begin talking about our proposals for new courses and textbooks, we heard Adam talk about our chamber choir, who performed this past Friday down at the convention center, and we would just like to congratulate the chamber choir. For those of you who might not be aware of this, Ms. Surin actually submitted what she called a line audition, and our performance was sent without any indication of what school district it was, what students. And out of 176 applicants, our school district and our chamber choir was selected to sing this past Friday. So out of all the candidates, or I should say, the individuals who submitted performances, there were six that were selected, six total, and we were one of the six in performance. And Mr. Maynes and I had the opportunity to go down there Friday, and it was, um, really made the district proud. Along with that, today, we received from Secretary of Education a letter of congratulations for an in for our music department, and this award is recognized, and I have to read this, as a best community for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. Now, this was an application process as well, and with this application, Rachel Surin and Tim Sheridan, who are teacher leaders, submitted, talking about the programs that our music, our music curriculum, course offerings, the number of times that our elementary students, as well as our junior high and senior high students, are exposed to music. So this is a national award, and our district was recognized for that, too. So I just thought that was very important to share with everybody tonight, and you're very exciting. And now, on with a lot of our teachers and teacher leaders. If we could start with Mr. Snyder and Mr. Sivakas, who will begin with a proposed course, a project-based learning course, and they will explain what the course is about, and...
A couple months ago, Mr. Maynes came to us, and he presented Project-Based Learning scenarios, and I have to give credit to Matt here. Matt came to me and said, "Well, why don't we blend our courses together, my current issues with his statistics, honestly?" And in addition to that, I think he really did it because he wanted to get out of taking all the polls that I conducted at current issues, and actually tied into his statistics. But in all honesty, it's a perfect blend of both, and we can delve, I could delve into the current issue aspect of it, and Matt can do the meat, and the mode, and everything else.
And the evaluation.
Stuff I love about him, but he is well versed in it, and we're excited that we have the possibility to do it, and we thank you for this time, and it's a life form. Thank you.
Want to introduce Jason Brand and Jeff Engel. We're going to talk about their astronomy and English. Last year, I was fortunate enough to be part of a trip to see High Tech High School out in San Diego, California, and they focus on project-based learning. Out of that, we came back and said, "We need to do something similar," and that they would pair courses together to interdisciplinary projects. So we said, "Let's try to set one up between astronomy and English." And we're going to set it up along the lines of, students will make observations, and then build the instruments that are used to make those observations. And then, the English component, the students will be able to then write manuals, so they'll be able to do cartoon videos that are along that. We will heavily structure the first quarter of that, and then gradually give the students more freedom, so that by the fourth quarter, they're going to develop their own interdisciplinary independent project that'll have to be approved by Mrs. Stallings, who will be the English teacher, myself, and then they will set out to do an independent project that ties together the astronomy with the English.
We just wanted to mention, Mr. Stallings will be the teacher, and we really think the technical writing aspect of things, there were some areas that we felt needed to address in technical writing, one of those things, you know, this course, we feel we should address that technical writing piece, and we kind of have a whole, a particular.
You have one more, Jason?
Yes, I'll also mention, as part of the project lead-the-way courses that we currently have, we have an engineering pathway, and we established a few years ago, biomedical pathway. So we have the medical detectives, we then move on to the principles of biomedical, and now we would like to offer human body systems. Once again, this is a private lead-away, so the plan is for general, we have to spend two weeks training, as the other teachers have done this summer, to be able to teach this course, which is the next course in the sequence of the biomedical science. As we look at our career pathways, this is the next step in that, so we were proposing to offer that course as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presenter will be Jessica Pellegrino.
Good evening. My name's Jessica Pellegrino, and I teach a 11th and 12th grade students at the senior high. As a member of the social studies department, I carry 90% of proposal for a new class in our department called Lincoln on Leadership. This course is inspired by the book called Lincoln on Leadership: Executive Strategies for Tough Times by Donald T. Phillips. This is a book that came highly recommended from Dr. Tepper, actually while I was in my graduate program. Students will, in this course, use this book strictly as a resource, in addition to many other resources that I've found in my research, and to provide a better understanding of this course, I'll read an overview of the course description. This course has a strong emphasis on teaching and practicing leadership skills through an historical perspective. Students will analyze, develop, and practice the leadership strategies Abraham Lincoln employed, which drove him to great achievements. By the end of this course, students will have a deep understanding of Lincoln's leadership strategies and be able to apply these strategies for college and career readiness. Students will engage in critical thinking and problem-solving skills through cooperative groups, class discussion, public speaking, research, and project-based learning, while also emphasizing reading and writing. I believe this course will not only be useful as history in context, but also as a way to enhance soft skills that students need to be successful in the 21st century workforce. I thank you for your time tonight and for your support in providing so many unique opportunities for our students at Greater Luttrell, and at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Next will be Mr. Maynes presenting an interior design course.
Michelle Butler, our family consumer science and business teacher leader, is at track meet right now. Courtney Koss, who is our fax teacher, will be teaching that course next year, but not be here this evening. But the interior, interior design will be a semester course, open to grades nine through 12. It will be dual-enrolled with WCCC, so students will be able to earn college and high school credit for the course. Students will be discussing and conducting research on elements and principles of design, different topics covered, will be furniture arrangement, floor paint, floor plans, evacuate, or floor plan evaluations, space, space planning, and design-related careers. And if you remember, in our family consumer science department this year, we just added hospitality and customer service, so we're creating a pathway for those students in that program. And I will tell you, Courtney has done a tremendous job with her own, her numbers. We just looked at some first numbers that came in for her, for all her courses, and they are through the brief. So I, special thanks to Courtney. Also, special thanks to Bob and Matt and Jason for really being the pioneers, for getting our project-based initiative off the ground for next year. So we're excited about that, and I'm very appreciative of their work that they're putting into these new courses. So thank you very much. The next up to present will be Eugene and Lindsay. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Engel.
Good evening, everyone. The English department is looking to add College Writing, a year-long course that's intended to add to our college and high school dual enrollment offerings for next year, a dual enrollment offering with WCCC. The College Writing course itself will cover the fundamentals of college writing, including paragraphs, expository essay patterns, and the argument and essay, with emphasis placed on developing coherent theses, writing concisely and clearly, adapting one's writing to a particular audience, in addition to foster an appreciation for cultural diversity, explaining how experiences and attitudes shape individual reading, and demonstrate how language can shape thinking. It's just a pretty, kind of, a college writing course that we're looking to offer to some of our students who currently go to WCCC to take that course. We're hoping to bring them back into the building and also offer the dual enrollment credit to WCCC.
Do we have a teacher on?
Not yet.
Mr. Reynolds, teacher.
Next up, Eugene Joe and Lindsay DeCassolo with Mindo.
Good evening. The junior high has one course to propose, and it's a brand-new unified arts course. It will be a 45-day curriculum that actually basically meshes right in with the current 45-day unified arts courses that we have. Students in 7th and 8th grade will be able to take this course, so it will be mix of both grades in the course. The course is designed as a social-emotional learning curriculum, so basically, it's going to be taught to help students sharpen and develop their skills in both interpersonal skills, intrapersonal skills, and cognitive decision-making, which are three really tough areas for junior high students. We're hoping to teach them, we're hoping to teach stress reduction techniques, as well as empathy in decision-making, positive goal-setting, engaging in accomplishing those goals. So we have a number of different topics that will be included in the social-emotional learning course. We've done quite a bit of research. I think Gino and I have researched probably about 40 different programs. None of them, we felt, really fit the bill for just, we want just this one thing. So now, we're going to be developing our own curriculum specific for Greater Luttrell Junior High through a variety of different resources. And we are lucky enough to do all of that current, utilizing our current staff. So we actually have some current unified arts teachers that were able to find space in their schedule and add a section or two of mind works, so that the majority of our kids will get this course in their 7th or 8th grade year at the junior high. Any questions? Okay, next up, we have a number of members from our science department, kindergarten through 12, or through 8th grade, I believe, and they're here to discuss the new science textbook adoption curriculum that they've chosen through a rigorous, a pretty lengthy adoption process.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about our recommendation for the K8 science program. My name is Kaden Alcor. Science 8 and medical detectives instructor at the junior high school. So we'll quickly take you through the process. It's our selection committee's recommendation of the board on the science dimensions program. It's a consumable program, very similar to one we have now, but it is based on the next generation science standards. We started this selection process formally in fall, only based upon our recommendations for implementation after trading this summer and implementation in the fall of 2019. We had, the committee, as we formed, picked a number down to three vendors, Science Dimensions, Amplify, and Bring Science Alive. Our committee is composed of elementary, secondary, and building principals, as well as central administrators, and we met over a series of days evaluating each one of these programs with a rubric for consistency and also along with formal presentations from each of the vendors. As a previously acting teacher leader, many of us have various presentations, obviously, on top performance of your science program. We've heard research presented by David Boundon. He is the PPE science coordinator, and he identifies these three characteristics of top-performing schools in science. Strong inquiry program, curricular coherence, and formative assessment, immediate remediation. And we believe that this program provides a very, very solid foundation on top of what we already do to move towards continually top-performing scores. First of all, this program is based on the next, next generation science standards, which consists of three-dimensional learning, which you can see below there, cross-cutting concepts that cuts across especially with math and English language arts. So what is different about this program, it is writing-intensive, and we believe it does support a lot of the classes that were just proposed this evening for the high school. Science and engineering, and disciplinary core ideas, a tremendous amount of critical thinking. And again, what was mentioned for our high school classes, this is development of soft skills, and we hear from production, and technology, and other businesses, this is what students need, this is what they look for when they recruit. At the junior high school specifically, some of our professional learning community, anecdotal data, also supports this program. In the science department, we focused on playing evidence and reasoning, SER, and that is a basic writing format for responding to problems, and we have found success with this, and this program supports it as well. Finally, the formative assessment and PSSA portion of software that's provided with this curriculum provides immediate grouping for remediation and enrichment, and its supports are currently adopted for the first-year wildcat time and program that we have at the junior high school, as well as the common plan for teachers. And then finally, how we are assessed, obviously, is the PSSA, and that does a very, very good job handling the breakdown of the PSA, the PSA, which is 50% ancient science, and then 50% our three core sciences.
Okay. My name's Jamie Whitcosse. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Mount Lehigh Elementary School, and I'm the science teacher leader for K to 2. I'm going to talk a little bit about our program's strengths that we felt that Dimensions was able to follow through on for us. What we really liked most was that it used the 5E model in all of its lesson formats. So as you go through the teacher book or the student book, they both are color-coordinated, so you go through the 5Es, which we have all been professionally trained on. So as you open up the program and you look at the book, the front cover that you see on the screen is very similar in every one of the units, it will go by the Engage as the starting factor in the 5E process. It will give a problem or something that the kids have to really delve into, so they start by really examining and being drawn into what they're going to be learning by figuring out, "How can we solve a problem?" It will move into both the Explore and Explain stages, it combines in this, so that's the longest part of each one of the lessons for this program. But it really brings in that math connection and the English language arts connection that AJ had referred to earlier. It will give specific ways for the teachers to implement those cross-curricular ideas throughout each one of the lessons, which makes it nice for teachers to have that spelled out for them in a way, so a new teacher can pick this up and really delve right into that, whereas, you know, an experienced teacher too can expand on that as well. So it really spells it out for them, and the English language arts part of it includes a science notebooking, which was really nice. All of the options are given, both in print and digitally, so the younger kids might be able to have the option of a science-level reader online that can be read to them, a kindergarten or a first-grade student might have that opportunity, as well as all the older grades as well. But they're given to us in print version as well as digitally, which is, which is really nice. And we'll continue into the elaborate stage of our 5E process, and in that stage, it really brings in a history part of it, so it might connect to more of the social studies standpoint from that to explain the history of where that science came from. And then finally, it goes into evaluate, which John will talk a little bit more about the assessment pieces of this, but it gives a lot of options for both students and teachers to be able to assess in different ways. There are also kits that are kind of this to do some more hands-on investigations, and I think one of the biggest complaints from teachers from our last program was that those kits weren't fully developed, so we didn't have things at our fingertips that we needed to really do hands-on investigations. So this provides a lot more for us, that we will be able to more readily do those hands-on projects with our students. And finally, I want to mention that it does include something that's called Scienceaurus, and it's almost like a dictionary of sorts, but it comes both in print format and online digitally, and it's a really neat component that, almost a glossary of different terms and science experiments and things like that, that the kids can look at both in a picture format and an explained word version, but there's a K1, a 2, 3, a 4, 5, and then a 6 to 8 version that comes in these kits as well, which is a really neat component, too. Next, John, I'd like to talk a little bit about the technology involved in this program.
Good evening. Joel Tosovich, I teach for Great Valley Elementary School, scientific leader for grades 3 through 6. What we wanted in a program was something that would mesh well with the technology that we already possess here, the Greater Luttrell, and we thought Science Dimensions could really provide that. They provide an extensive digital program, which is used to enrich the curriculum, the videos, simulations, as well as virtual filters that could utilize Google expeditions that we already have within our classrooms. The program access itself is done through a modernized learning system known as E. Previously, it was ThingCentral, which we found to be rather cumbersome in terms, especially for the students to use. E really kind of picked things up for us, we thought, and it's going to simply allow access to everything and anything offered within this program. Just the interactivity with the book itself, Jenny mentioned, the science notebooking, which is great, the students can reference, they can highlight, they can pull text, they can take notes right within there itself, and everything is saved, everything is housed within that learning platform, which is going to be a great addition to what we already do. As well as the Chromebooks that we have, everything's Chromebook compatible, so it's going to allow us to solve smaller instruction, colder instruction, we can just continue forward with what we're already doing. Next piece, which will be assessing piece. And again, assessments are important, I mean, they drive, they drive everything we do in the classroom, and using that assessment to drive instruction is vital. And Science Dimensions, simply the assessments included, they allow rubrics for open-ended questions, ongoing benchmarks, they provide the opportunity for that instant feedback, as well as technology enhanced items, providing deeper insights for us as teachers to be moving forward and pushing our students. The rigorous questions that are embedded within... The rigorous questions that are embedded within, we see those pre-tests, we see those in the post-tests, as well as the unit tests and even the benchmark assessments that are included. All those tests are adaptable, allowing for differentiation, the adaptation, modification of each assessment, just to meet the needs of our students. And again, I think it goes back to AJ said as well, just that immediate feedback piece, you know, to allow us to monitor what our students are doing growth-wise and to kind of meet their needs individually, that immediate feedback is a powerful, powerful resource.
Just to explain our next steps heading forward for the full of course, we are looking to have a procurement of this program by May. We're hoping for our May 10th in-service to have some professional development for our teachers so that they can use their summers and be able to become comfortable with this program. So, if we get that professional development done as possible, would be our preference on that, be able to do some implementation planning over the summer. As teacher leaders, we'd like to meet with our grade levels and make sure that we have all of the resources and all the materials that we need to jump right into this in August and implement the program fully at the start of this full year. Thank you very much for your time. Please, anyone have any questions?
Just to acknowledge to the board, Dr. Zorich and Ms. Maitz both previewed both primary, intermediate, and junior high school sets of books with the program. I commend the group that sits on an implementation program committee. It's hard work. It's them identifying vendors, it's the requesting of materials, it's them pouring through materials, using a rubric to evaluate. I will tell you that when this process started, where they ended is not where I would have bet. There was one of the other three vendors that I really felt, I really thought they would have settled on, but as a part of this process, you know, I continue to remind them, trust the process, investigate, ask questions. We would meet with vendors and re-meet with vendors, and they would come up with their Google Docs full of questions, and it is amazing to watch the process play out. And at the end, they ended up with a program that, I think you learn through a process like this, no program's perfect, but you find the one that best meets your needs, your staff needs, your student needs, et cetera. So, it was, it's interesting to trust the process and watch it play out. And I commend them for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you to all the teachers who came out to present. Thank you, guys. Great job.
Yes. To approve in the eventual land, institute course in a federal class agreement, several approvals by the event in the next week, to approve the Hanco physical and application of therapy LLC for the 1920 school year, and to approve the Delphi education incorporated for the 1920 school year, through the Dr. Robert Keller charter school, every one quarter of the 1920 school year, those who all have an agenda for next week. To approve a tuition student from living in a school district that was to have an agenda, and to approve, to approve the nomination, Mrs. May, district representative to the Adams Memorial Library Board. I guess with the departure of Mrs. Eldred, she was our representative for many, many, many years, and we didn't think about it. And there is something in the bylaws that said that the school district has to set a representative to that who works, so if you'll vote for me, I will do that.
Thank you.
There are other things made in the meeting minutes for March the 19th, 2019, attached, and that's pretty much what you heard this evening about the new courses. I believe Mr. Brown has some books, if you'd want to look at those books for the, before we vote next week, I'm sure he'll make them available to you. And the next curriculum committee meeting date is Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 5:30 PM here in the CSE.
Thank you. Finally, next week on the agenda for your approval will be treasures report, payment bills, gift grants and donations. We held a finance committee meeting just prior to this meeting, the executive session Facility operation planning. On the agenda for your approval will be Westmoreland Intermediate Unit of Life Skills Lease Agreement, award bid, awarding bids for audio visuals, visual supplies, distillate and so on, as listed. Approve renewal of Johnson Control Fire Protection. Facility's operation planning committee meetings are attached from April 4th. Next facility's operation planning committee meeting will be May 9th at 3:30 at the Adams Building. Student activities and recreation, Mrs. May.
Yes, thank you. There's a boys tennis senior night on April 17th at 3:00 PM at the tennis courts, if you can attend. And there are athletic committee minutes from the meeting on March the 20th attached, also every week.
Community relations, Dr. Zorich.
There's an attachment for Crayley Trev Parks and the Rec Commission meeting minutes. The next meeting is Thursday, 14th, 4:30 in the Turbinesville Way. We have a, is there a student from Lake Trev that sang the national anthem at the looking day of work?
Yes, I saw it. She's a student who's enrolled in one of our home education programs. But yes.
Heathrow last Friday in the front. Where is that?
No offense, no offense. I can die from reading these textbook presentations. I don't ever remember learning any of this stuff in high school. It's unbelievable how vast this stuff is for these kids, and it's almost unbelievable.
Thinking skills are a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Zorich.
Really, it's really something else. The kids are actually learning this stuff about life.
Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, Lee Azom, Mrs. May.
Thank you. Agenda for next week, reward the multi-purpose paper bid, that's a yearly thing. Also, to approve authorization to participate in Westmoreland County Schools National Gas Consortium for the 1920 school year, and to approve authorization of Westmoreland County Schools Consortium for National Gas Representative and Alternative Consortium. And summary of the WIU board meeting minutes are attached, that's from March 26th. And the next, the WIU committee meeting will be April 23rd, 7:00 PM, Fort Orange, WIU Building.
Thank you, Mrs. May. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Dr. Music.
Thank you. Attached to the board's agenda for EWCTC, 2019, 2020 operating budget for performance week. The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting runs from March 27th, are attached to board agenda. And the next meeting for the EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, April 24th, notably at 7 o'clock at the EWCTC building.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Board Policy, Lee Azom, Mrs. May.
Yes. On your agenda next week will be the policies for second reading. There is a change to one of them, if you've already read these, and that's policy number 7 of 7, the use of school facilities. Basically, what was added to that, the list of parameters, if you want to rent a school facility, you'd have to meet, and we had not concluded that in the last reading, so if you want to take a look at this, they're actually on page three, I think it printed right off, so there's five of them, if you want to look before you vote next week.
Thank you, Mrs. May. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next policy hearing will be held, we'll hear Tuesday, or 16th.
At 16. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Different attendance recommendations.
Next week, what we'll have on our board agenda for resolution is to approve the resignations for retirement for the 10 teachers who have submitted letters within the March 31st guideline for the early retirement incentive. When I look at all of these teachers, calculated that there are over 240 years of service to the school district with these 10 teachers. Clearly, much is lost when people retire and we clearly wish them well. As you probably are aware, when a teacher is hired in the district, they come to the board meeting to introduce themselves to you. We don't require retirees to come and say goodbye. However, on June 5th is the last day for teachers in the district, and we will be honoring our retirees for the district at the June 5th morning meeting, which is about 8 o'clock, so everybody is invited and will certainly note their service to the district with their colleagues at that event. In addition, there are three coaches who are also resigning from their positions. We would ask the board to approve the support personnel appointments that are classified as well as the supplementals. These are volunteer coaches that are working with our spring sports, so that will be retroactive to beginning of the season. Under other business, this weekend is the Junior High School Musical, Seussical Junior, and if you happen to go out into the hallway, you've heard them rehearsing this evening, so if you're able to attend, please do so. We do have an early dismissal next week, April 17th. Our spring break is Thursday and Monday, and Thursday, Friday, and Monday, if you recall, Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday is the snow makeup day because we had an additional snow day this year. Our breakfast of champions in April is the 25th. We have some other items, our sixth grade Olympic Day is May 3rd. I think the students' reference sixth grade camps are going to be starting soon in May. We have our 1920 kindergarten invitation days on May 7th, our band concerts, May 7th, our act 80 day is May 10th, that's the day of the prom, which we have traditionally done an act 80 day, so our students can get ready for the prom, which is going to be held at the Antonelli Event Center in Irwin. Under meetings, I just would like to note that next week on the board agenda would be to cancel the Tuesday, May 21st regular board meeting because it is election day, which I was informed I didn't know about, but the calendar was made last year. We would then recommend that the committee of the whole meeting and the regular board meeting be held together on Tuesday, May 14th, and that really is a scheduling issue because of all the events that are going on at the end of May in the school district. That would be a resolution that would be on for next week, again, the cancellation of May 21st. So, we will all be here next Tuesday, April 16th, at 7:30 for our regular board meeting in April. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmer. Thank you all for coming to see our meeting.